Ms. Weatherly, would you come down? No ma'am, I would like you to lead us in the pledge.
All right, no, I do, I, I'm still questioning this because that's what we are not supposed to do with the pie of this piece of cloth, so I've been, I'm not able to hold it in this but I have to.
Do you not want to lead us in the pledge?
I'll, I'll go ahead and do it, but I'll, I will be getting my conscience, I'll be going, is this for anything to do? And I don't know.
It's all, it's, it's all, it's fair enough, if you would not, if this is too, if you don't want to.
Is it okay if I just sit back?
You can sit back. Mr. Manager, would you lead us?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate your position, Ms. Weatherly. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Of course. Von Hartung Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill Vice Chair.
Here.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Keddie Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Present.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mary Canderas.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasine, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number three, public comment?
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
Of course. Mark Newman is up first, followed by Elise Weatherly.
Welcome, Mr. Newman.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Mark Newman. I'm also on the Sun Valley Citizens Advisory Board and I'm running for a seat on the Sun Valley General Improvement District. At the beginning of this month, I went to the Washoe County Senior Citizens Advisory Board, right down here on corner, and I was told that they had computers out in Sun Valley and that the seniors out there could find out a lot of information off the computers. So, the next day, I stopped in at the Sun Valley Community Center and found out, yes, they have two computers. They've been there for close to five years. They were brought in, put on a desk, keyboard was there, the mouse was put there, and they left the room. Never been hooked up, nothing to them. So, I got ahold of a Mr. Todd Ackerman through the Washoe County Seniors Board, and he sent a tech team out there to find out. I'll read you the letter I received from him. Here is most of the recent information regarding the computer units located at the Sun Valley Community Center. Our te, our tech team visited the Sun Valley site last week and determined that two computer units are currently onsite, are no longer viable units due to their outdated software package, Windows 7, and have not been utilized in a number of years. The next step will take to access the desires of our senior nutrition program clients that utilize the Sun Valley Community Center, to have access to that type of technology. Well, it's kind of hard for them to use computers that haven't been hooked up for five years, and I'm here to ask you to, pleased to look into it and see if Mr. Ackerman, Todd M. Ackerman, can do something a little bit more than probably what most of our, not you people, but government employees, they'll probably leave a card and say, please, uh, see this app, uh, on the internet and fill out your, which they do not even have access to a computer. Thank you very much for your time. You guys have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Elise Weatherly, followed by Tracy Hilton-Thomas.
Ms. Weatherly.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, whose legal name is actually Patty Elise Weatherly, as, as Charles, uh, Mark Newman's legal name, Charles Mark Newman. Do you know what I need? I was gonna have you guys, um, take a look at this, but I'll just, I'll kind of just talk about it, because I wasn't really prepared. Got a letter from, uh, the board, where Mr. Newman is a member. Um, I used to be on the board, but it's like, um, things were not going so well for me. Uh, I had to, my doctor said, I told my doctor, I said, "I am having physical problems because of the treatment that I've been getting." He goes, "No, we have to rule out that the, you know, tumor might have come back," so I spent $135, which is reasonable for an MRI. Um, I talked to Dr. Lawrence Davis, who is the owner of Davis Chiropractic, who also owns the studio that I go and do most of my work with, and, um, he sent me to an attorney. So, I found out from the attorney, and it wasn't too expensive, that, um, what I was being told, what the board was doing at Highland Ranch Homeowners Association, was against state law. So, um, I want to move out of that community, obviously, you know, because of what Washoe County employee Pete Etchart did to my community with the school and the lights and all that. I don't want to be there anymore. But I can't afford just to move yet until perhaps my daughter is assessed reasonable amount of child support so that I can actually stay within my budget, okay? So, what I want is, I want to find an attorney that will actually represent me when I go against the bad guys. I can't find one, you guys. The attorneys don't want to say what's right or wrong. They want to have a name for themselves. They don't want to cause waves, which, by the way, the wreck of the Edmund Fitzgerald. Do you guys ever have those days where you come to work because you're just not feeling good, but you, you know, you come anyway? We're in the same boat. How about if you know that there's things that are being done out there that are absolutely wrong, but you don't have the strength and the energy to fight them by yourself? We're in the same boat. Let's say that we're on the Edmund Fitzgerald and we're scheduled to leave at 2:15 PM on November 10th, and we, we, maybe we take a few minutes to leave the port. Well, guess what? Because of that, because of somebody didn't check the weather forecast, we crash. About at 7:00 PM, the main hatchway gives in, and I say, "Hey, it's been good to know you." What if we're in that boat and we're gonna go downhill if we just don't take care of business with each other? I know that I harp and moan and stuff, but my dau, I was homeless for a little while, because I didn't have a really good game plan for leaving the monster that would have murdered me. But I found a way to get out of it. I worked. I took care of myself. I worked hard. My daughter, she is homeless. I don't want us to spend money on people that are not willing to say, "It was my fault. Let me help. Let me do something about it." And I would like to find an attorney to take Highland Ranch Homeowners Association to court. Thank you.
Tracy Hilton-Thomas, followed by Zach Young.
Welcome.
Good morning. Romans 3:23 teaches us, "For all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God." We fall short when we speak or act unkindly toward one another. Last week brought yet another publication concerning the safety and well-being of our election workers. You sit with the authority to direct the registrar's office on procedures of Washoe County elections, but have done nothing to acknowledge concern for our election workers, let alone take any action to protect us. Do you just not care? Surely, you can't possibly think this is all just being blown out of proportion. I have worked with Deanna long enough to know it takes a lot more than a piece of paper with profanity on it to get her rattled. If you are going to continue wasting taxpayer money and resources on electronic ballots, as well as jeopardize the safety of election workers with the lines for this redundant and wasteful ballot, I request you implement the centralized voting center provided in NRS 293 dot 2955. The 2020 general election utilized the Reno Sparks Convention Center for one of its polling locations, which provided 50 voting kiosks. It was supposed to consist of two rooms with 25 kiosks in each room, but the convention center and all their wisdom combined the rooms for some unknown reason. Nevertheless, the location would provide the best security for election workers while assuring an efficient flow of voters. Utilizing the remaining 29 polling locations as ballot collection centers would increase safety for election workers and reduce election costs significantly through reduced staff at polling locations and call centers, reduced training needs, reduced equipment to be maintained, and chain of custody, et cetera. This solution would also centralize observation opportunities and greatly reduce the impact of conflict among voters waiting in line, electioneering, and bad actors looking to interfere with our election processes. It also reduces the response needed from the Sheriff's Department. I am pleading with you. Please, 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 give this solution serious consideration. Be a hero. Protect your employees. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Zach Young, followed by Judy Hare.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Hartung, Commissioners, and Manager Brown. My name is Zach Young. I'm the Assistant District Attorney for the Washoe County District Attorney's Office. I supervise our criminal division. I am here to offer comment at the appropriate time on action item number nine, when that is called specifically. I'm here to discuss how it pertains to the recommended funding of the District Attorney's Office budget, which is insufficient to the office to advance the best interest of public safety and victims.
Thank you.
Judy Hare, followed by Debbie Hudgens.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Welcome, Ms. Hare.
I have something important I'd like to share with you all. It's entitled, "Washoe County Provisional Voting Anomalies." In the 2020 general election held on November 3rd, 2020, the EAV report to the Secretary of State of Nevada, page 2, exhibit 1, indicates a reported 4,139 people with same-day registrations for both early voting of 2,208 and Election Day of 1,931, requiring a provisional ballot be cast according to NRS 293.5847, exhibit 2, requiring a quote-unquote "final verification" by the SOS NRS 293.5872, exhibit 2, page 2. The Public Records Request of March 28th, 2022, ID 109342, exhibit 3, quote, "All written procedures of how the Dominion voting machine data gets entered into the DIMS County database, all reports of provisional votes cast using the Dominion voting machines that went to the Secretary of State's office and the report returned to you on or after the Saturday following the general election of 2020. Were there any provisional votes cast using paper ballots interrogate? If so, how many and on what days?" Received from Assistant Registrar Voters Heather Carmen, email dated April 4th, 2022, exhibit 4, quote, "The Dominion voting machine does not connect to our election management system, DIMS, so there is no written procedure," unquote, to which I responded, "This does not answer my question of how the data gets from the voting machines to the DIMS system. I understand there is a flash thumb drive used interrogate. If this is correct, there has to be a written procedure of how to query the voting machine, get the data into the flash drive, and then how to transfer that data into the DIMS system," unquote, to which Ms. Carmen responded 10 days later on April 14th, 2022, quote, "There is not a written procedure on how Dominion voting machine data gets entered into the DIMS County database," unquote. So, either the votes cast on the Dominion voting machines are not in the DIMS system, or it has magically transferred itself from each of the voting machines into a county-secured database all by itself without any personnel involvement." I just want to repeat that. So, either the votes cast on the Dominion voting machines are not in the DIMS system, or it has magically transferred itself from each of the voting machines into a county-secured database all by itself without any personnel involvement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Debbie Hudgens, followed by Nicholas St. John.
Welcome.
Debbie Hudgens, for the record, this is a continuation of the Washoe County Provisional Voting Anomalies. So, either the votes cast on the Dominion voting machines are not in the DIMS system, or it has magically transferred itself from each of the voting machines into a county-secured database all by itself without any personnel involvement. After some discussion about the provisional ballots and the Dominion voting machines, Ms. Carmen indicated there is a code attached to the precinct number in the Dominion voting system to identify a provisional ballot. The report provided through EAVS indicated provisional ballots. Yet, according to the April 2021 voter registration database, there were none, zero, zip, nada, no provisional ballots cast. Yet, in the EAVS report to the Secretary of State, 4,139 by law should have been marked in the DIMS database as provisional voting, standing for, oh, PV, standing for provisional votes. With further analysis of the April database, at least 2,000-plus voters who registered on 11/3/2020 and voted for the first time on 11/3/2020, making them provisional voters, requiring the NRS statutes to have cast provisional ballots. Yet, they were all marked with PP, indicating they were cast as polling place ballots in violation of the NRS code, requiring them not to be counted till after the Secretary of State's verification reports was returned on or after the Saturday after Election Day, which we are told there is none. According to the NRS statutes, these provisional ballots must be kept separate from the other ballots, yet there were no paper ballots to be kept separate, and with all of the PV ballots cast being done in the Dominion voting machines, how could they possibly be kept separate? At the very least, there should be a report from the Dominion machines indicating the status of the provisional cast ballots versus the regular, regularly cast ballots. Please see attached exhibit 6 outlining the requirements per AB 345 of 2019 legislative session. Please see attached exhibit 6 outlining the requirements per AB 345 of the 2019 legislative session. In response to my Public Records request, 10342, request for the Secretary of State's report, we do not have a report from the state because there were no provisional to report as a potential double vote. This is not the decision Washoe, um, Registrar of Voters is required to make whether there were any potential dou-
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Nicholas St. John, followed by Donald Fossum.
Welcome.
For the record, Nicholas St. John, this is a continuation of the Washoe County Provisional Voting Anomalies. Each of you should have one of these. I'll put this on record when I'm finished. I do need the overhead. I will get to this last. I will continue our remarks. In response to the, to the PRR 109342, uh, request from the Secretary of State report, we do not have a report from the state because there were no provisional to report as a potential double vote. This is not the decision Washoe, uh, Registrar of Voters is allowed to make without their, their, um, whether there are any potential double votes, as they simply do not have access to all the counties, which is why it must go to the Secretary of State for validation, certification, and provide a provisional ballot at the time the vote was cast. Without this report from the Secretary of State, none of these provisional voting ballots cast should have been counted, which is accounts for 1.65% of all votes cast in Washoe County. However, according to the Secretary of State's provisional ballots, historical record, exhibit 5, there were 5,173 cast, another discrepancy from the filed EAVS, of which 4,179 were counted, giving Washoe County an 80.78% counted rate, which, after an increase with the same-day registration, went into effect, 1,020.20% provisional votes, uh, after, um, 2016 in Washoe County. This had never been above 60% counted rates, yet with that, with an over 1,000% increase, we jumped to 80% counted. Eight counties had 100% counted rates in 2020, where most were in the range of, uh, as low as 4% and as high as 66% previously. Only one county each year, 2008 and 2012, reached 100%. One year had four votes, the other one had one, uh, and, and our range had been between 46% and 59%. In summary, there's either corruption in the ROV office, or there's an extremely high level of incompetence. Either way, an investigation needs to be opened. Proper procedures are defined and implemented immediately. Staff must be trained and implemented. If you look at the overhead, and I'll put this on count, Cole Springs Middle School had 2,950, uh, registered votes, or I'm sorry, uh, provisionals. That is by far way and above everything else. That is 246 per hour, and this needs to be looked into as this has fraud written all over it.
Donald Fossum, followed by Janet Butcher.
Overhead, please.
It's up.
Good morning, everybody. Good to see you. Uh, I have a handout for y'all. And I also have a really good report on election integrity. The gentleman you're looking at there is, I shouldn't mention that, he's campaigning, I guess. Anyway, he represents the same program that we presented to you. Voter ID, counting paper ballots, getting rid of Dominion machines, and yada, yada, yada. Well, my excellent report is, he has been getting together with 17 states' worth of other people running for that same position of Secretary of State under these guidelines. Very successful and growing at it. Uh, he's been able to eliminate the Dominion and ballot counting machines around the country, not just in your home state, folks. I'm sure you heard about it. And, uh, so I'm, uh, that's about all I have to say, and, uh, celebrate along with us and help us fix this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fossum.
Janet Butcher.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
Good morning, Janet Butcher, for the record. I wasn't gonna come today, but my car just kind of like drove in the parking lot, um, so I thought I'd take the opportunity. If you have any kind of a computer background, you know code can be manipulated. If you can't audit the code, things can happen. You can do trigger programs. Um, it's just common sense, and, and if you know computers, you know that. Um, I spoke directly to one of the Commissioners, actually two of them, that at the Spanish Springs Li, not the library, but the Spanish Springs High School, they did not have a stamp to stamp in the, um, mail-in ballots as they were dropped off. Um, one of the, one of the Commissioners said they'd look into that, but I haven't heard anything. Um, so, they were writing dates and times on, on those envelopes. That can, as they came in the mail, and they came in after the deadline. Don't know. Also, too, um, in asking for voter ID, that's not a bad thing. Why not? We show ID for everything. Um, the, um, there's a lot of things, well, like, I was switched to being inactive. I got primary information. I voted in the primary. This was in 2020, or 2018, yeah, 2020. Time goes by fast. Um, in 2020, I was made inactive, but I voted in the primary. Um, as I poll watched, a lot of people came in and said the same thing. Why were they made inactive? We voted in the primary. I was intimidated and harassed by an out-of-state California attorney, as, while I was a poll watcher. I think we should eliminate these people coming in from out of state. Aren't we capable of handling our own elections? We really need to take a good, honest look at what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have nobody else signed in.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number four.
Item, item four is Commissioners and County Managers announcements, reports and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have any such items?
I do not today, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Hill, I have you sign in, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to announce, in case the County Commission didn't know and the community didn't know, that Incline Village has been officially designated a Nevada Main Street program, and we're going through the process of what that would look like, redevelopment, and a lot of, um, great communities, and especially rural communities in our state have done this, and I wanted to see if there was any, um, opportunity to help other parts of the county, if they're interested in going through this designation, and then if there's any, um, support that the county wanted to provide, staff support, um, et cetera, to this type of program. So, I'd like to see that on a future agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
There's so many H's.
A bunch of them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we had a, we heard, uh, a project or a development for Highland Ranches last, last meeting, and, um, I would like to request that this be brought back for reconsideration. Um, I think there's been adequate, uh, changes and adjustments made that I think we could deliver a positive, uh, vote on that. So, I'd like that as number one. And I'd still like to see if we could maybe do a BDR this year on capping that fuel tax increases, the increases to it, um, or maybe bring back the whole thing for, to go on the ballot or whatever. So, I'd like to research that. And, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, Mr. Woolrich, will you make note of the reconsideration and make sure that Mr. Solero understands? Okay. Um, do, we just need to make a request right now, or do we need, does it need to have a second?
The reconsideration.
I know it's not on the agenda, but, but-
You won't be able to, excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. Um, I don't think you can do a reconsideration without having it, um, agendized.
Okay, okay.
So, I think it would just come back for a future.
So, just, because, because any one of the Commissioners who's on the prevailing side can ask for a reconsideration, and then it comes back for a vote.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. We don't need a second Commissioner to agree with that reconsideration.
Not right now, I think.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Mr. Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple things I wanted to point out. First of all, um, we had, uh, the Deputy Secretary of State, um, come and meet with the manager, myself, and staff to discuss issues, and I know we've had, uh, consistent, consistent conversations here about voter registration and voter issues with, um, eligibility and duplicates and those individuals. And what he had mentioned and what staff here at Washoe County are working on with the state is that if you receive, um, the Secretary of State and the Registrar Voters of each county send out cards, and if you get a sample ballot or you get a voter registration card that is no longer at your address or no longer with your family, for whatever reason, have moved out, he's asked, and it is consistent, please, on that voter registration card, please write, "Return to sender," and place it back in the mail. That is the best way for us to continually clean up the voter rolls across the state. This is not a Washoe County thing. This is a statewide issue. Uh, the Secretary of State has been very adamant that this is the best way for them to continually fight, um, and clean the rolls to the best of their ability, because there are a number of times that, as the Chair has pointed out, this is a living document, not something that is audited once a year, something that continuously is changed and updated daily by the Secretary of State and their staff. So, please, if you receive something from either Washoe County or the Secretary of State, and the voter no longer resides at your address, um, please, just write. It is not a federal offense. It's a state offense to write. Please return to sender, put it back in the mail. It will be sent back to the Secretary of State's office or Washoe County, and those, those individuals will be taking off an, an active status at, with the Registrar Voters. Washoe County is working diligently with the Secretary of State to continue to get that message out across the county, but don't be frightened to sign, "Return to sender" on those pieces of mail. So, I wanted to make sure- So I wanted to make sure of that. This month is also, Commissioner Hill did participate, or Vice Chair Hill participated in placing pinwheels for, it's, April is National, please help me, Commissioner, Protect, yeah, Protect Children Month. And we at HSA have done a phenomenal job. There is, I believe, there was, going to be next Tuesday, next Tuesday at the ACES Ballpark. We'd asked for people to come and join us. We're going to be placing pinwheels, blue pinwheels, in the ground that morning to represent all the children that are impacted by aided, you know, by abused children throughout, throughout our country. So we'd like for everybody to come and help participate with the county in that kind of ceremonial to acknowledge April for that, for that month as well. And with that, Chairman, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lucy. For me, couple of things. NDOT has taken down the advanced signal warning systems on Pyramid Highway. Now they're completely, they're completely down. If you get a chance to drive Pyramid Highway, please note the garden now, the plethora of skid marks at every single signal. And we just had an accident at the crest of Disk the other day. Actually, I believe it was yesterday. And so I'm going to find out the exacts of that accident. But I, I myself, you know, you, you're traveling fifty-five miles an hour because that's the speed limit. And as you're approaching a signal, you don't know whether it's going to change or not. And in fact, I found myself, it wasn't a panic situation, but I had to stop abruptly when the signal changed because there is no advanced signal warning systems. And those things provided advanced knowledge that the signal is going to change for the simple reason that the speed limit is fifty-five miles an hour on Pyramid Highway. And sadly, NDOT has created a dangerous situation. I'm not going to get off this. It is, it's not, it's not a good thing. We've got more and more and more traffic on the Pyramid Highway than I've ever seen before. And when the signals were removed, I believe it's one more scenario of where NDOT has created an even more dangerous right of way throughout the entire Spanish Springs Valley. And, and so I wrote the, a letter to the governor, asking the governor directly to intervene, got no response at all from the governor. So, you know, the, I, I don't, I don't know what we do, but I guess we, I guess we watch. But I believe that they have put people's lives in danger. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, Madam DA, I mean, I know, I've, I've had this conversation with Mr. Edwards. It would be good if you, if you guys could, could bring us back, even just a memo, and if we have to do an agenda item on the fuel tax. I know that, I know that there's a lot of strain being placed on, on drivers these days. I completely understand. But I, I believe because it was a voter initiative, and the whole, the whole process was voter-approved. And of course, those funds have been dedicated. And I've seen some, some opinions on this over the years. So I'm hoping that, that both, well, all three, you, Ms. Canderas, Mr. Edwards, and, and Mr. Spear from RTC can put together an item that talks about the fuel tax, how it was initiated. And, and, and I, and I don't believe, because of the way that it was done, and because now that the funds have been dedicated for projects and are paying for those bonds, I don't know what our options might be in terms of the indexing, but I'd like to understand it.
Mr. Chair, we will put someone on our team on that and get back to you.
Yes.
Very, at least, at least some of a history and kind of explaining everything. And then if it needs to go on an agenda for any action, we will do so at that time. Thank you.
And, and perhaps we can also coordinate it with, with RTC, because the same conversations are happening at RTC.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lucy, I have you sign in again.
Thank you, Chairman. You did spur something for me, and I agree. The advanced warning signals have been taken down also on Mount Rose Highway and at the corner of State Route 431 and Virginia Street in front of Summit Mall on the way out to Pleasant Valley. And you and I have both been very much advocates, saying that this is not exactly the way, nor should this be approached in this manner, but yet has still continued to be approached in this manner. Not only did they really abruptly place signs that traffic changes were, were going to occur, but they did not really give ample time to the community to truly evolve because within a week, they took down from the actual warning signal, the timed warning signal, to just a blinking yellow. And with another week, the, all of the systems were down. So not only was it against what we had asked for, but the abruptness of how they delivered and took those signals down. The only two now, there used to be on Mount Rose Highway, at least five signals. Now there are only two for the east traveling, going down the hill. They've left those two at the corners of Thomas Creek and Mount Rose Highway. And then also at Wedge Parkway in Mount Rose Highway are the only two that are left. Yet still, we are seeing issues with this, and to no response other than this is national guidance. And I fail to see the benefit of that. And that, that to me is frustrating as well. And one other thing I wanted to bring up that I forgot, I felt needed to be discussed. In our last meeting, we had a pretty contentious discussion about a piece of property out in Holcomb Ranch area. And a lot of it resolved around the road, which is a state route 671. I know staff has been working on this. However, the state indexes fuel tax as well. And the state fuel tax that it's indexed, portions of that state fuel tax goes back to the RTCs around, in Washoe and in Clark County, but then stays in the index fuel fund for funding roads across the state. And my, my request would be, if the state cannot, and we're talking about a very truncated, very small piece of state road, it's only three point eight, three point eight-four miles from where it was changed in 2008 from Holcomb, Huffaker Lane in Del Monte, up and around Lakeside, and then back down Holcomb Ranch Road to Virginia Street. It's three point eight-five. If the state can't facilitate the improvements needed on those roads out there, when you have multimodals such as bikes and walking traffic, you have recreational traffic, you have residents back there, you have horse properties, you have commercial traffic, those types of roads should be improved. And RTC, I would ask that the Washoe County staff work with RTC staff to identify funding, to make those improvements. Because if the state's not going to be able to do that, then we need to take it, make it very apparent, for these types of arteries into our system, they need to be improved. And I, I'm, I'm assuming that this is, you know, in mind, this is just one road, but there's probably multiple roads throughout the county that need to be addressed, that are, that have been identified as state roads that aren't being kept to the standards of which we in Washoe County deem appropriate and safe. And so I would like to continue to move forward with that and have staff work on that and see if we can bring forth some sort of, some sort of an improvement for those types of roads throughout the county. And lastly, one last thing I forgot to bring up, Mr. Chair. The chairman, myself, Mayor Sheevy, Mayor Lawson, the managers, and the fire, the fire chiefs from around the region did have an initial meeting to talk about where, how we move forward with improving fire service across our county and across our region. Not for the sense of governance or costing more to the, but truly for the benefit and public safety of every resident within the Trekkie Meadows. And the discussions are in their beginning of infancy. We are very, but right now, the time is now to move forward on type, these type of discussion and, and make sure that all residents of Washoe County have access to quality EMS, quality fire service, quality public safety. And that starts at the top level with the individuals sitting at this dais, sitting at the city of, the city councils of Reno and Sparks, to really come together collectively to find out what is the most efficient and most effective way to bring public safety to the most priority state it could possibly be. And so I'm, I'm thank you for, for putting that meeting together, Commissioner. Chairman, it was a wonderful meeting. I think we're off. I know the manager and the other two managers have met. And we're moving in the right direction. But hopefully, they, we can bring this back for more robust discussions and have individuals such as Washoe County, Trekkie Meadows Fire Protection District, Reno, Reno, City of Reno, Remza, the Reno Police Department, Sheriff, Sparks Police Department, Sparks Fire, and the airport, all participate in these discussions because it is paramount that we make these decisions now because it affects future planning, it affects our dispatch, it impacts how we work with homeless and the individuals. We have invested a ton of money into our community to address the homeless situations within our community. And if we can improve our dispatch, that means we can work with Good Grid and HMIS to make sure individuals are identified and make sure that we are giving them the proper services. Because right now, through the siloed communications that we're utilizing, we are not doing the best job we possibly can. And I think it's paramount that this commission and, and the entire region band together to find suitable, more evolutionary types of approaches to service. So we're no longer throwing good money after bad, but we are really, truly identifying the issues and making the changes that need to be made. Thank you, Chairman.
No, thank you, Mr. Lucy. I'm glad you brought that up. I want to just dovetail, and then I'll let Commissioner Herman speak again. I want to dovetail backwards and, and say, yep, we believe that regional dispatch, that that's the conversation that we'd like to have, regional dispatch with an immediate boundary line drop, period, just, just doesn't matter. Closest unit responds. Because nobody cares what, what color the engine is. And, and so that's the, that's the immediate goal of, for us anyways. And we'll, hopefully, we'll get everyone else on board. And then with respect to the, the public outreach, you know, Commissioner Lucy, I think you're right. NDOT did not do any public outreach. In fact, I believe that they had made the decision to remove the advanced signal warning systems prior to doing any public outreach at all. And then once some pushback came, and then they started doing public outreach. But by that time, they had already made the decision to remove the signals. And so it was a, it, it was not, it was not a good process. We, we, in Spanish Springs, still feel that, that NDOT was never really at the table to discuss why they should be removed or why they should stay. And so that was a, it was very frustrating for us. Commissioner Herman, I have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And on that same subject, I know that there's a certain cost for the engineers and that calibrated the lights because it was constant. And I know that electricity's a, a cost. But there'll be the sale of that equipment. There's value there. So I'd like to know what that cost was and make sure that all those funds go towards improvement to the highway. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We could definitely have a, an agenda item just, just on Pyramid, and we would, it would, it would draw some attention. If nobody else has anything, I will close item number four and take us into item number five, Mr. Manager.
Item five, Mr. Chair, is proclamations.
Okay. And item 5A1 is the national, April 2022 is the National Donate Life Month. I am going to do this one, if you guys don't mind. Come on up to the podium, everyone. As, as most of you know, this is a subject that's near and dear to our kidney, our daughter's kidney. A lot of people like to say it's near and dear to their heart, and I, and I believe that. But for us, a kidney was a life-saving organ. And so I, I've told this story on a number of occasions. I'll tell it real quickly again. We had a, an emergent issue that we were not aware of with our daughter. She needed a kidney transplant in 2008. Our wife, my wife, her mom was the donor. She's, she's in amazing condition now. She's a professional in our community. It just speaks to how life-changing organ donation can be and give back life to many folks where they live a completely normal life. So I feel really blessed to stand here. I know we've got a whole bunch of people. Because you're my hero. You are my hero. Nancy, I don't know your last name, but... Ponte, okay. Nancy Ponte is, is one of our heroes. We're gonna, we're gonna let her speak here in just a minute. This is not in any order. This is just what I have, and I'm sure that I don't have everyone. Matt Graves, Denise Nickel, David Astorga, Chris Johns, Dan Lunn, Monica Miles, and Kimberly Flores. Did I get everybody, or did I miss some?
Tom Graham.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So let me read this proclamation real quickly. And then I'm going to give you guys an opportunity to speak about the importance of, of organ donation and, and also tissue procurement. I'm going to take my glasses off, but I'm, I'm going to have a hard time seeing, so. So, a Washoe County, Nevada proclamation. Whereas, more than 600 individuals in Washoe County are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and 17 patients die each day in the United States due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas, organ and tissue donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, saving thousands of lives each year. And whereas, the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. And whereas, organizations across Washoe County and the Silver State work in close partnership with families, doctors, nurses, and coroners in the Nevada, in Nevada hospitals to connect donors to recipients. And whereas, residents can sign up with the Nevada donor registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the Nevada Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas, Donate Life Month is an opportunity to educate citizens about organs and, organ and tissue donation, and is a time to offer thanks and appreciation to the donors and families who inspire our communities to do so. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2022 as National Donate Life Month, dated this 19th day of, of April 2022. Signed by my hand, Chairman of the County Commission. I don't know who these go to. Doesn't matter to me. I'll leave them here, and you guys can decide. Please. Again, first of all, I want to thank you for the hard work that you guys do. And, and here's, here's the last thing I just, I want to say about my own family situation. If we did not have guidance from groups like yours so that we could understand the system because it is so complex, because you have to be registered, even though you have a live donor, you still have to be registered, and it's, it's a difficult thing to get through the system and understand where funding comes from. Because you, you may not even be eligible. We found this out, just, it was just by happenstance, that we had a transplant feature, an addendum in our insurance policy. And it was, and we didn't, we didn't even know that it existed. But here's what I will tell you. Even though we had that, and my wife was the donor, they would not pay for my wife to be, to procure the organ because it was voluntary. So, so we had to find other funding in order to achieve that. So thank you so much, all of you, for the hard work that you do every single day. And, and, you know, the folks who have given so much for so many. Okay, if I don't move away. I'm going to cry.
Don't cry. You'll make me cry.
Don't cry. You'll make me cry.
So, this is so, this is just, this is so important to my family. So, please.
Can I go first?
Sure.
Thank you, Chairman Hartung, for sharing your personal story. I mean, it's a, it's a motivator for us all in doing what we do every single day. So I thank you for sharing your story. My name's Dan Lunn and I'm Vice President of Tissue Operations for Nevada Donor Network. Each April, our team celebrates National Donate Life Month with the support of our Nevada Strong community. Currently, there are over 100,000 Americans waiting for their second chance at life, life through organ and about 600 of them are Nevadans. This month, long observance brings awareness to organ eye and tissue donation with the hope that Nevadans get registered and honor those that have given the ultimate gift of life and healing. Thank you. Together, we can share the hope donation brings to those who say yes and those who desperately wait for their gift. So thank you to Chairman Von Hartung and to each of you for your leadership in your community and bringing our mission to the forefront of your many commitments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mike is open.
Thank you. First of all, thank you again for allowing us this opportunity and recognizing Donate Life Month. I'm Matt Graves. I'm the Vice President of Tissue Operations for Donor Network West. We are the federally designated organ procurement organization here in northern Nevada and northern California. Again, our honor to be here. It is, you've already said a lot of the talking points that I had, but in terms of 600 Nevadans are waiting for a life-saving gift and it is, it's so important to, to the community to know about the education that's needed for, for this. It's, it's complicated and it's messy and we are here to help the community understand the importance of organ eye and tissue donation. I did want to say that invite everybody in, coming up in May, Donor Network West is holding a Spare a Life fundraiser. The proceeds will provide support for more education and outreach around organ eye and tissue donation. The event is taking place here in Reno at the National Bowling Stadium on Thursday, May 19th at 5:30. I invite everybody to come. It'll be a good time. And for more information, please visit sparealifenv.org. I also wanted to announce that Donor Network West is looking forward to inviting each of you to come to our upcoming Ribbon Coming event to, with our new headquarters here in Reno, standalone facility. And we are looking forward to also working with our Northern Nevada Advisory Council, which is made up of Northern Nevada and community and healthcare leaders, including Mayor Shivi as our Chair, with its purpose to being, is to provide guidance, insights, and strategies on developing new and innovative ways to share the benefits of organ eye and tissue with our, donation with our community and encouraging everyone to register to be a donor. So again, thank you, Commissioner Hartung, for your ongoing support. Thank you to the, to the Board of County Commissioners to, to help us raise awareness for this important cause. Thank you.
Nancy, you want to say something?
Okay. Thank you very much. This is so dear and near to my heart because I'm a donor mom. My daughter passed away in 2015 from an asthma attack. It was a sudden thing. And little did we know that my daughter signed up to be a donor without us even knowing. So with that gift of life, she gifted three people and hopefully they all continue to do well. We were able to meet her coronary recipient in 2019 and what an incredible journey we've been on. And I'm happy to be an ambassador for both Nevada Donor and Donor Network and just all the good things that happen in our community and the community comes together when in need. So thank you very much. This is super exciting.
Thank you. You're an amazing ambassador. Thank you so much. Ladies? Please, Tom.
Thanks. Thank you. As an ambassador for both Donor Network West and.
Please identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Tom Graham. Sorry about that. So I'm an ambassador with both Donor Network West and Nevada Donor Network. And I do this because I've been the recipient from two organ donors. I've had a kidney pancreas from one donor. The pancreas failed and I got a second pancreas from a person out of Las Vegas. I went to the Mayo Clinic in Phoenix for my transplants, but I'm very blessed in life. And the true way that I can honor my donors is to be an ambassador and to share my story with everyone and to make sure we are all organ donors because it saved my life. Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Anyone else? Thank you for being here. Okay. I don't know who gets these.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. By the way, Commissioners, that was in the form of a motion. So that takes us to 5A2. Mr. Lucy is approaching.
Good morning, Chairman. It is an honor to stand in front of you this morning. Some amazing proclamations we've had already. April's a very special month to a number of different organizations, but one that's near and dear to my heart and, and that I've called home for the last eight years is the County of Washoe. Not only am I proud to serve as the Commissioner for District Two here in Washoe County, but I also serve as the President of the Board of Directors for the Nevada Association of Counties, which represents all 17 counties out here in the state of Nevada. And the role of county government is important to the community and me personally because if, when, unless you're truly immersed and truly involved in what goes on here every day within the county, you really don't understand the immense capacity in which we, in, in touch people throughout the region. People wake up every morning and, and, and make sure that their, the stoplights work or the power is on or their kids can get to school or daycare and that individuals or they have to go to the court or whatever that may be. People don't realize that those services are supported by government employees, county employees. And so it's an honor that April, we're, in April, we are celebrating National County Month. And I'd be remiss not to take a moment to shine the spotlight on Washoe County's 2,700 employees that work here day in and day out over the 24 different departments and divisions that make up Washoe County's government. And with a proclamation, and I'm going to share a proclamation with four National County Government. Throughout the money, throughout the month, however, the county is going to be highlighting what we do in the county, in county government and the breadth of services that we offer to the community and the constituents as a whole. We encourage you to listen to this Thursday's edition of Washoe Life Podcast, which will give you a glimpse into four very, very different and interesting roles within the county from our parks, our open spaces, to our medical examiner's office. And we aren't done. So please visit our social media outlets throughout the month to gain a greater insight to Washoe County, Washoe County in honor of National County Government Month. People that are going to be featured on our podcast are Dylan Means from the Community Services Department, speaking among the roles in which County Services Department plays, Celia Walker from our Parks Department, Ms. Kelly Etterveria from our Emergency Services for the one that helps organize when, when all disasters happen, both national, I mean, natural and, and, and citizen caused. We want to make sure that we are, we are there to respond. And then we also have Brogan Mullins from the Medical Examiner's Office to highlight the roles and importance of that department. And so with that, it gives me great honor to read this proclamation for you this morning. This is, whereas, the nation's 3,069 counties, parishes, and boroughs serving more than 315 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas, Washoe County has dedicated staff that takes pride in providing the services that our citizens rely on every day. And whereas, Washoe County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect, enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in an efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, under the leadership of the National Association of Counties, President Larry Johnson, NACO is demonstrating how counties thrive, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the Corona, coronavirus pandemic. And whereas, Washoe County takes pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of our residents in efficient, cost-effective ways, strives to maintain and protect our rural lands and natural resources. And whereas, Washoe County is a social, economic, policy leadership force in Nevada and Western United States. Integrity and effective communication and quality public service are regarded in the utmost value. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2022 as a national county government, dated this 19th day, April 22, and signed by our fair Chair, Von Hartung. So thank you very much for acknowledging. We usually have quite a few employees, but they're off doing their roles today, making sure that our county still operates. So this proclamation is more for them than anybody else. So we thank all 2,700 of you out there today that are working diligently to keep our county going. Thank you.
Mr. Lucy, is that in the form of a motion?
That is in the form of a motion, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we've had two proclamations on item five. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on these items?
We have nobody signed in on either.
Okay. I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Ms. Canderas, we both made a motion. Can we, do we need to take two votes or, or do we need to, what would you like us to do?
I think I would two, two votes.
Two votes, all right. So I'd make a motion that we accept the Donate Life proclamation. So I have a motion by, a motion by Hartung, second by Lucy. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. That takes us to item 5A2, the National County, National County Government Month. Mr. Lucy?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to proclaim April 2022 National County Government Month.
Okay. I have a motion by Lucy, second by Jung. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. That takes us now, Mr. Manager, to item number six. Would you open that up for us, please?
Sure. Item six, Mr. Chair, is donations, items 6A through 6D2.
Okay. Ms. Hill, would you like to do our donations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would love to. Donation 6A1 is individual and in-kind donations to the May Arboretum Society for Regional Parks and Open Spaces totaling $229,805.17. And thank you so much for our community for donating to that. Item 6B1, donations to the Humane Services Agency to include senior services totaling $5,696.03. Item 6B2, donations to the Human Service Agency to indigent services totaling $1,025. Item 6B3, donations to the Human Services Agency to the homeless service, homeless services totaling $4,865. 6B4, donations to the Human Services Agency to Child Protective Services totaling $7,144.75. Item 6C1, donations to the Washoe County Regional Animal Services Agency in the amount of $13,589.25 from numerous donors to be used for the humane care and treatment of sick and/or injured stray, abandoned, or at-risk animals. 6D1, donation of $10 from a private citizen in support of the Washoe County Sheriff's K-9 Unit. 6D2, private grant from the Joan Bates Sims Charitable Fund in the amount of $1,000 to be used for protective equipment for Washoe County Sheriff deputies. And that is in the form of a motion. Thank you to our community for those very generous donations.
Okay. Thank you so much. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay. I have a motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Jung. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item six?
We do not.
Okay. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager, that takes us now into item number seven.
Item seven is our consent calendar, Mr. Chair, 7A1 through 8F1. I have no changes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to make a motion and point out some donations as well.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the consent calendar agenda, but I'd also like to point out 7B1, our Chair, Chair Hartung, is donating $5,000 to the Donor Network West, supporting efforts to educate the northern Nevada community about organ eye and tissue donation. And 7B2, our Chairman Hartung is also donating to the Nevada Donor Network Foundation to aid in the organ procurement organization's capital campaign with the goal of creating an organ transplant center in Nevada. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
It's my pleasure. Thank you. Thank you for reading those. So that's, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I could, item eight, I'd like to call out, which is the Silver Summit Health Plan, donation to the Washoe County Housing and Homeless Services Division in the amount of $240,000 in support of case management. I would point out, these folks reached out to us at the beginning of the year and said, how can we help the county in its efforts to expand case management and other wraparound services? We did not go to them. And what you see, what you're being, what you're voting on today is a result of their, their outreach to us to, to help us with our, our homeless services group.
Wonderful.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, just a matter of clarification, that was item eight.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll come, we'll come back to it. Yeah, we'll, we'll do seven first and then we'll go to eight.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
That's okay, that's okay, Mr. Manager. It's.
I'm sorry.
It's all kind of rolled into one. I, I understand. So we, we had a motion for item seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a, I have a motion by Ms. Hill, second by Mr. Lucy. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item seven?
We do not.
Close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager, you have already read item number eight. And so Commissioners, do we have any questions on item eight?
Not a question, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you so much. This is an incredible partnership. We're so grateful. And I know that this is something that our manager has been working very hard on to create this public-private partnership. And so we're so appreciative and really look forward to continuing the relationship and showing that we're really going to be transforming lives with these programs. Thank you.
No, thank you so much, Vice Chair Hill. I mean, we, we could not do it without the assistance of the community. And so I'm, I'm beyond thrilled. That's just, that's amazing. What a, what an amazing gift. Commissioners, anyone else on item number eight? I need a motion.
So moved. Thank you so much to the Silver Summit Health Plan.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Hill, second by Ms. Jung. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item number eight?
There is no public comment.
Okay. Bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, I believe unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Mr. Manager, that takes us to item number nine.
Item nine is a recommendation to acknowledge status report and possible direction to staff on the county manager's recommended fiscal year 2023 budget with estimated appropriations of approximately $965,207,730, which incorporates board priorities for funding for existing contractual obligations, supplies, utilities, personnel costs, and unfunded mandate from the 2021 legislative session, second year of property tax refunds, increasing the supporting regional homeless services, capital improvements in operations, maintaining the county assets and infrastructure needs, and operating budget requests, and direct the county manager to return to the Board of County Commission with a tentative and final budget for adoption in a public hearing to be scheduled on May 17, 2022. And Mr. Chair, we have Lori Cook here for us this morning.
Ms. Cook, welcome. The floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. Excuse me. For the record, Lori Cook, Budget Manager, Washoe County. This is an overview of our budget timeline. This is pretty much the remaining, or the beginning and the end. This is nine months of our year. We don't take three months off, so don't get too excited about that. But July through September, we start planning for the next year. We work on our budget book, which is one of our communication tools, as well as a, to provide financial policies, direction, information, community information. So, we do have other activities going on, but as it comes to development of the CIP and the operating budget, this is the high-level overview of the timeline. This was discussed last week, April 12, so there haven't been changes, obviously, to this slide, but for the benefit of anybody who maybe didn't hear last week or was not here, just some information from the January strategic planning workshops, so some of the focus areas, and information relating from that meeting. Economic outlook, this also was, excuse me, included last week. What I did do is add the 12-month ended December CPIU, just so we had kind of a comparison of apples to apples, should we say. So, when we look at going into 2020, right, so, ending 2019, it was 1.8; ending 2021, 1.2; and then ending 2021, 4.7. We do have the updated information from BLS for the year 12 months rolling through March, and that is 8.5%. And so, when we talk about inflation, and we talk about some of these other impacts, that's specifically, most specifically what we're speaking to. There are a variety of reasons behind those inflationary impacts, but we know one of the large causes is geopolitical concerns with supply chain disruption, as well as some supply chain issues and backlog just related to COVID itself. These also are slides from last week. They should look familiar, but what has been updated is for the US forecast. So, we knew it was going to be slower, lower, however you want to state that, but now this, from the conference board, is a 2.2% in 2023 versus 2022. So, when we talk about slower growth, that's the, what we're looking at right now. From this perspective, there's obviously different economic models and economic forecasts. So, slowdown, this is not new. So, when we talk about the final projections from the state on property tax, and we will discuss how much, you know, obviously, that's the largest source of revenue within the general fund. 8.4% increase for all funds. C-Tax, we have estimates. Ours are more conservative than state estimates right now. Fine fee revenues, we talked about that, most specifically in the fine arena, which we do true-up. So, every year, when we go through this process, when we start this process, actually, we look at year-to-date, reach out, try to find out what's going on, what's happening on the ground, what kind of impacts have we seen. There could be operational impacts to some of our revenues. There could be legislative impacts. There's just a variety of things. So, we just, we have to look at that first and foremost to see what we have going in to any particular budget process for resources. Again, the base budget, so for those who might not be familiar, we do, we do participate, it's a base budget process, so everything that's approved from the current year is a, that was a permanent part of the adopted budget, rolls forward. So, it becomes the next year's base budget. Then we look at things that need to be adjusted, so whether they are based on contractual increases, collective bargaining, whatever those things are that we know about, that we have to address to keep operations going, that is basically, becomes those things that we know about become part of the base budget. Then when we talk about above base or enhancements, those are things that would be additional. Sometimes they are of our, you know, board direction of things that we, you know, are supposed to be doing, or things we want to invest in, and sometimes they come from the departments, from the operating side, based on workload and different, different information we get from the departments. So, for this year, for our general fund, we had a request for $35 million above base and 142 FTEs. We did, just so the board knows, we've done due diligence, we ran that scenario, and it is not a sustainable scenario to approve all those in fiscal year '23 going forward. So, that is just kind of upshot it out. So, that leads us into the recommended budget. Just as a reminder, we did, we met with Commissioners, we met with departments, we've had meetings with, obviously, the county managers involved in the entire process. So, and we'd also do that for the CIP projects, so for the capital projects. And so, it's not just the operating budget, it's the capital budget as well. So, the $965.2 million, so, this is very interesting. It's kind of a landmark, at least in my mind, we're almost a billion dollars budget, which is, for some agencies, might be fairly small. For other agencies, our agency, this is pretty substantial. It's a significant budget. We have multiple, you know, funds. Within those funds, we have multiple programs, we have departments. So, there's a lot going on. So, back to Commissioner Lucy's proclamation, there are a lot of services provided. That's not necessarily indicative when you see this, but it does, those components are what make up those budget appropriations. And when we talk about appropriations, there are expenditures, transfers, right, transfers to support other funds and contingencies. So, it's not just expenditures. So, we can see here, obviously, the general fund is the largest, is the largest. It's by far. Special revenue funds, we've grouped that together, but there are multiple, many special revenue funds. Senior services, for example, is a special revenue fund, child protective services, there are multiple special revenue funds. Capital projects and debt service, those four are what are considered or categorized as governmental funds. Then we have proprietary funds. So, we have enterprise funds, which are basically run like a business, and internal service funds, which those funds support, equipment services, health benefits, risk management. So, those are our internal service funds. So, those total appropriations are $965.2 million, based on the recommended budget. Now, I apologize, but to get the governmental funds together is kind of, it's a squish. But this is how it lays out, right? This is how we get to that. And so, we have a lot of governmental funds. Those are all on the left, and then our proprietary funds are on the right. And because proprietary funds are accounted for slightly differently, because they're not governmental funds, you can see there's operating expenses and non-operating expenses. They also have operating and non-operating revenues. We don't have that kind of distinction from the budget perspective when it comes to governmental funds. It's revenue, expense, transfers in, transfers out. So, some of the highlights going into the recommendations, we have year two of our required, legally required property tax refunds. We do have, we've discussed before, legislative unfunded mandates related, you know, elections, AB 424, the most prominent. Increased stabilization fund, one per, 2%, so that would be increasing it from 3 to 4 million. It still stays in fund balance. It's well below the statutory maximum, and we have accessed it twice in the last, since the floods in 2017. So, in the last four to five fiscal years, we've accessed it twice, and it's also been replenished twice. So, there are restrictions on use of that. It's statutory restrictions, but we have used it, and we have used it recently. Investmental capital improvement programs and infrastructure scorecard projects, and those are later in the presentation, too. We'll talk about those. Expansion, what we're knowing on the CARES Campus operating costs. Additional 93.3 FTEs, full-time equivalents. Some of these are positions that are .75 now, and they're going to a 1.0. Some of them are actually brand-new positions at a 1.0. That's why we use FTE, full-time equivalent, and this is all funds, not just general fund. And then, general fund, five-year fiscally sustainable forecast, so when I talked earlier that, you know, we ran different scenarios, the recommendations that are coming forward from the perspective of the enhancements within the five-year forecast, you know, notwithstanding something major, or something we don't know about, or, you know, a major issue happening, would be sustainable. So, again, most of the time, or, you know, most times, the focus on the general fund budget is the largest. It supports basically every function that we budget within governmental budgeting, so public safety, judicial, general government, I mean, just all of those categories that we have, that we have to submit our budget to the state. So, what we have here is an estimate of fiscal year '22. It is not the same as our budget for fiscal year '22. There are a variety of reasons why. Fiscal year '21, we had different operating results out of fiscal year '21 than we anticipated. And we also have some additional information this year when it comes to different revenues and expenditures, so whether they've been salary savings throughout the year, or other things that have come up. So, what we see is a net change in fund balance, or use of fund balance of 10.7 million. And then, for fiscal year 2023, right now, recommended, which reflects the, would reflect the tentative budget, we have total sources of a little over 462 million, total uses of 506 million. Use of fund balance, that's the red number you see there, the 44.1 million, identified for one time. So, we do have the second year of settlement payments. And then, to support some of these projects and programs within the CIP, what we call CIP, so capital improvement, infrastructure scorecard projects. We also have ongoing uses, majority of those you will see in salaries, wages, employee benefits, and then the actual, the transfers out, the ones that are not noted as one time. We anticipate the majority of those to be ongoing, and we'll, those are broken out in the next few slides as well. So, this is just a different graphical, or graphical, I guess, representation of the recommendations. So, you can see the '21 year-ended, '22 estimate, and '23 projected. We get this question a lot, is, you know, where do the, where do revenues come from within the general fund? Well, over 84% are consolidated tax and property tax. As consolidated tax grows, it becomes a larger percentage of that total, but by far, it's still property tax. The other areas of, you know, we'll have fines and fees, and some transfers in from other funds, not significant, charges for services, those types of things. But really, the bulk of it is coming from property tax and consolidated tax. And so, the actual budget for property tax in the general fund for '23 is 222 million, consolidated tax at 166 million. Then, how is it used? What are the total uses? So, we can see the total uses, again, are the 506.5 million. Personnel costs are 285 million. We can see that it's 56% of total uses. That's because we have those large, that large amount of transfers out. But when you look at actual expenditures, so expenditures only, personnel, 74%, and that's in alignment with service central, people central agencies. I've seen it into the 80%, depending on the services that are provided. So, 74% is not out of alignment with norms. Services and supplies, we do have some increases in there based on anticipated increase, things that we know contractually that will increase, and other things that we've had to adjust as we've gone through the budget process that we're seeing, you know, fuel, or O&amp;M, or these different types of things as, you know, they come through. The settlement payments, that is the gray portion there, the 22 million, and then transfers out at 22% or 108.7. So, what's making up those transfers? Well, we'll talk about that in a minute. I got ahead of myself. I thought I was on my next slide. So, when we talk about the ongoing and the positions, that increase would include the enhancements that are noted, the new positions that are on the chart. They run the gamut. They run across pretty much every department that's submitted. There are different areas of support, so rather than just having that functional, you know, this department is public safety, and this department is judicial, frame it in a way that we're bringing it forward as far as, you know, priorities, you know, board priorities. So, you see vulnerable populations. We have other, we have regional central support, legislative, and criminal justice. And again, this was iterated with the department heads, but because we have ongoing and collective bargaining, if, we might not be able just to, you know, run in on May 18, if the board, you know, adopts a budget that has certain personnel approvals to start recruitment right away, we might have to hold off on that until we, you know, have a better idea of where we're going to head into July, or head into next fiscal year that begins July. We also have reclassifications. It looks like a lot, but this actually is probably one of the lower numbers of reclassifications I've seen over the past few years. I think when we weren't able to entertain or take requests for additional positions, departments did a really good job of trying to figure out how to retool their processes, and therefore, you know, reclassifications were more prevalent for those activities. And these are in the same categories as the new positions. So, transfers out, these are in order of largeness. So, it's from the highest number to the lowest number. It's not alphabetical, it's not prioritized, it's not anything other than the largest to the smallest transfers from the general fund to support. So, capital improvement, and we will talk about this, it's a whole separate section in this presentation. We have a base, if you will, or ongoing transfers identified for 7 million. That's not been sufficient, but it's something we've been able to get back to. When I first started in budget, I think that transfer was 1.5 coming out of the recession. So, those are those things that we use for building improvements in roofs and HVACs and those types of things. And then, one time, to be able to identify those one-time projects, high-risk, they may be deferred. We had $9.4 million of deferred projects when COVID, so the end of 2020 fiscal year and into fiscal year '21. Then we have our ongoing transfers, which include indigent, the homelessness fund, which was new last year, the health district, debt service. So, that is the non-advalorm-backed debt service. So, that is our, basically, our C-Tax geo-debt for different issuances, senior services, that reflects an increase based on recommended budget to support daybreak and homemaker programs, road maintenance, and child protective services. So, that, over to the right, in the box on the right, we see what is driving that increase compared to prior year is mostly, mostly one time. Speaking of the homelessness fund, we did not have a homelessness fund in fiscal year '21. That's why there are no actuals there. We have an estimate for '22, a recommendation for '23, and it's, it's a variety of different programming and departments, so to speak, that are within the homelessness fund. And so, those programs, there's admin, there's a sheriff's homelessness initiative, and so that is two deputies and a sergeant, and they just, they just established the classifications, think mental health counselor, supervisor, and somebody, gosh, I can't remember the other one off the top of my head, I'm sorry, but it's a, it's a, not another deputy, it's not a law enforcement, it's that mental health, social aspect for that team. Then we have crossroads. We have crossroads related to alternative sentencing, as well as human services. CARES Campus Shelter, the Safe Camp, so CARES Campus Safe Camp, Continuum of Care, Housing Administration, and then with in human services, there's an admin portion, Our Place, Women's Programming, TADS and VOCA. TADS and VOCA are mostly grant-funded, so the grants exist in this homelessness, oops, fund. And then, total positions, as we have right now, 87.2. There are technically two new positions in the housing and homeless services, but they're kind of not new positions, they're mid-year facility positions that the board approved that now the, the funding is funded through, through the transfer. But we also have human services, crossroads, and then the sheriff's initiative. And then, the transfers, that support, so the majority of funding is coming from transfers, you can see is broken down, and again, like the transfers from the general fund, it's just broken down from largest to smallest as far as where they're coming from. So, within this budget as well, there are, were additional other department or other fund requests. So, the net change in FTE, health district, has a few changes. Child Protective Services, homelessness, and senior services. The senior services that you see there is the result of the recommendation for the Daybreak Homemaker Services program. So, that's retooling their existing staff, reassigning existing staff, and then adding new staff to be able to support those activities. Animal Services, Regional Communications. And then, there are, obviously, there are some reclassifications as well, not a material number, again, a fairly small number compared to prior years, but reclassifications for those same, basically same departments and funds. And when the, this is all detailed, it's all outlined, it's position by position when we come forward on the 17th. Some of these are pending, or there could be an appeal, or there could be a technical change of title between now and then. So, this will, this will be separated, it will be an attachment to the 517 or the final budget. So, you can see everything broken out. So you can see everything broken out. So capital improvement, infrastructure scorecard projects, this is, I don't know, this is exciting for me, so weird. 125.8 million of appropriations for these capital projects between the different funds. We can see utilities funds, utilities fund is largest, the majority of that is coming from the actual projects or later, but the STEMWORF expand, the continuation of the STEMWORF expansion project. So the second, it had come to the board, we do have this, did issue this second SRF, so this remaining 23 million of SRF loan, SRF bond funding for that project this year. January, I think, is when we closed on those. So those, that project is, is in next year's budget as well.
Sure.
I just, I just want to make sure that we, that we put this on the record. The STEMWORF project, that's not from taxpayer dollars.
No, it's utility fees. So the utility fund is one of those enterprise funds, and so my apologies for not mentioning that earlier. So utilities is an enterprise fund, the golf fund, which is fairly small, is a, is an enterprise fund, excuse me, and building and safety. So the majority of our permitting activity goes through building and safety, which is also an enterprise fund.
Ratepayers.
Yes.
Right, okay. I just, I wanted, I wanted to make sure that we got that on the record, because those are substantial numbers.
Correct.
And, and I'll go back to some other numbers in a minute, but I wanted to make sure we look.
Yeah, this is, this is not general fund support.
Thank you, thank you.
So going through the CIP process, and you know, we start that fairly early, we have within the 23 to 27 requests, over 247 million, and those are those items that are able to be somewhat quantified at this point. You know, there are some projects that we know are on the horizon, but we don't actually know, you know, is it a $10 million project, is it a $12 million project? We don't know. So the recommended two-phase approach related to getting some of these, we've kind of talked about one and done, high risk, being able to get a ba, to a baseline for our asset management and being able to move forward is to, there are, to identify funding. So the first phase would be to identify available 22, which is the current year we're in, funding for multi-year projects that the board has already approved. So because we adopt a one-year budget, normally what happens is these multi-year projects are just budgeted year over year over year over year. And sometimes something has to be put on hold or it has to be deferred. These projects are not those types of projects, they're, they're already in process, many of them are legally obligated to move forward with, such as the P-25 radios. Other ones obviously are, are risk-based and, you know, we don't want to stop the progress. Another example, that would be the bunk bed modifications for PAR. So these are projects that have been identified, they're already approved in the multi-year plan, but being able to, to establish the full project funding for these rather than, you know, carving it off the top every single year. Then there are recommendations, which bless you, on the next slide, for 19.5 million dollars of projects. Again, the majority of those are one-time, high-risk and/or deferred maintenance projects. And then within this 22 identification, we've seen, and I know the board has seen, and we brought forward, you know, various changes to contracts and whatnot, just the unknown, the contingency, the escalation. We have some very large projects going on right now, CARES Campus is one of those. We also have the P-25 infrastructure, that's, you know, so there, there's a lot going on that, you know, there could potentially be a need for additional funding. And then for 23, recommended general fund transfer, again, we talked about that 7 million becoming is the base ongoing, identifying 38 million for one time. There are some projects, they're listed below with the other bullet, that are, all of them other than the district attorney facility improvements are, you know, they're not like a set in stone type of thing, and we're not sure that they would be 100% of anything that we would need to fund them. But the idea is that this funding could be used for leveraging, it could be used maybe as, as match, it could be used for a variety of things to support the remaining 243, 200, about half. So what we have here is identification for about half of the needs that we see, and then there's another half that's remaining. So four more, any of this, these are submitted from the subject matter experts, the departments, they go through the CIP committee, they go through, it's not just a, you know, hey, what about this project? So there is a, a process related to these projects. So when we talk about the 19.5, that would be these projects. So these are new, what we call new projects. So facilities and building projects, that was one of the areas on the infrastructure scorecard that obviously needed attention based on that information, is 14.5. And you can see roof, doors, HVAC, you know, they're not, I guess for some people, they're super exciting. I think they're just more of like maintenance and things that we need to do. We do have some enhancements for parks projects. We do have technology infrastructure. This is where the other, if I go back here real quick, when we talk about Sheriff's Records Detention CAD system, this 2.1 million at the bottom of this chart, that's the Washoe County portion, this is a shared expense, this is a regional expense. So the other portion of this upgrade, this, we have to have this, this CAD, it's records management, it's corrections management, and the dispatch portion of it, this 4 million, why is it net number, is the non-general fund portion. So that's the other regional portion from the JOC, the Joint Operations Committee, Regional Communications. And then we have the in-building P-25 BDAs, I had to get clarification on that, we do use a lot of acronyms, and that's to make sure that within the buildings, when we have our P-25 radios, that they work in the buildings. That can be an issue, it has been an issue in other jurisdictions of, you know, you have emergency response and the radios can't do their communication job because you don't have what you need in the building. So, and then we have some library projects that the library brought forward, they have, they have funding, whether it's a gift fund or within the expansion fund for these projects. But there's some big things here, there's some things that, you know, have probably needed to be done for a while, but finding the funding for those has been a challenge. One of those would, I, in my opinion, because we've seen it year over year over years, like the senior center, so getting those senior center building improvements going, and so not to talk about any of them being more important than others, but these are the types of projects that we get them every single year. And the longer we wait to do them, the more expensive it becomes to get them done when it comes time. So just to note, these are the new projects within the CIP fund, which is a separate fund. Total projects right now are at 51.1 million, that's how we get to the total appropriations of 125. So these are the new projects, there are carry-forward projects, other multi-year projects that are included in next year's CIP plan. Then we have Parks Capital Fund. As you can see, all of these are noted as carryover, there were a few new projects this fiscal year, but once those become partially or all next fiscal year, they, they technically become carryover projects. So there's $5.9 million identified there. Within the utilities fund, again, we have the STEMWORF expansion, then there's the PVI, Pleasant Valley Interceptor, and then Steamboat Lift Station. And so those are the largest, from the numbers perspective, related to those 57 million in the utilities fund, again, ratepayer utility rates, not general fund support, not property tax support. Within Rhodes Capital, those are, those are Rhodes Capital projects, it's those capital expenditures that Rhodes does, not because, you know, we're building a particular bridge or something. And then equipment services, capital, heavy and light fleet investments within the Rhodes Fund. So, that's a lot. It's, it's been a very interesting process. It's doing our best to leverage what we, what we know, what we have, and, you know, avoid, you know, we take the board's concern seriously when it comes to, you know, overextension or, you know, we tend to be fairly conservative when it comes to, you know, recommendations and working with the county manager. So the next steps for us would be to come back with our final budget on the 17th and then submit it to the, and that will be both, there will be separate items, there will be the budget, to adopt the budget, and then there'll be the five-year CIP. And the five-year CIP will show all of those carry-forward projects and all of those projects, those, that comes to the board every year, and we actually have to submit that to LCB and to the Debt Management Commission by August 1st. So it's, you know, statutorily required that we do the five-year plan, even if it wasn't something we, you know, did anyway, is we are required to do that. But we do have to submit to the state by June 1st.
Beg your pardon.
That's okay.
I was reading. Thank you, commissioners. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in first, and then I know there are probably some others who have some questions as well.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, I appreciate it. Ms. Cook, and, and obviously to no fault of our own, with AB 20, AB 424, it's one of those most challenging, it's probably one of the most challenging pieces of legislation that's come out of Carson City in years past, that has, you know, challenging unfunded mandate impacts to the county. And as I'm going through the list here of recommendations, I realize that the shift has changed on the pre-trial sentencing issues and, and the 24, 24 to 48 hour court appearances, which makes it very, very difficult. I know district attorneys and judges across the state and every county are having very difficult time addressing the needs of these new laws. And for me, I know Mr. DA Young initially came up in, in public comment this morning and, and made some statements. But when I look at this, I know initially that the district attorney's office had asked for about, I believe, 14 individuals for, to fulfill their needs to make, to meet those requirements. And I, and I understand that it, it impacts not only the district attorney's office, but the district court, justice courts, both Sparks and Reno, sheriff's office, and the alternate public defender. And this is a major shift in how we process justice and how we process criminal cases here in, in the county. My opinion is, is that I, I understand that seven, seven FTEs is what we're trying, is what's being proposed. However, I, I don't feel that that's adequate. Now, there are some, there are some individuals maybe that we could not prioritize, and I know these are discussions that I had with you and Ms. Lettich, and, and how important I knew this was. I feel that this is too much of a cut, honestly, to that, to that staffing level. I'd like to see that number get back to their original ask of 14, because I know the sheriff's office and, and the DA's office are going to be the ones that most impacted with transfers and really making sure to stand up and have those discussions. Possibly, you know, maybe support staff can be cut, maybe some of the, but they need the DA's, they need the supervisors, they need the, they need the investigators, they need the individuals helping process this, because this is not, the problem is, is that when these court cases come in, and, and now with the urgency of having to have them be represented, and no longer is it the defendant's duty to defend their position, it is now our, as the county, as the, the state, to defend why these individuals should be incarcerated or held on bail, or what the, that, and, and that's a major shift in the judiciary and how we do things. And to not have adequate staff to address that in a timely manner is really, in my opinion, a challenge to public safety. And that's not what I would like to see. So yes, I, I think there's probably some, like, you know, maybe the OA, like an OA2 or a department specialist, but, you know, the program, you know, when you talked about a victim's witness advocate, that because of Marcy's law, we need, we need to have those, those addressed, we need the DA's, we need the investigator to timely put this, and one of the issues that we have fought with Judge Egan and had a number of conversations between all of the departments, public defender, alternative public defender, the DA's office, the sheriff's office, to input all of this information into the system in a timely manner and get it ready for a hearing within 24 hours is, is almost impossible. And we're having tough time, and tough enough time to get reports from the arresting agencies so we can get those, you know, the proper defense put together. And to have, to short them staff, I, I think this needs to be adjusted back to at least, if not 14, at least 12, 11 to 12 of those members within that office, and, and the same for the sheriffs. I think, I believe the sheriff's request is adequate to address AB 424. And this, and the proposal I'm recommending is that we address it for now, because we don't know, we don't know what we don't know. And the unknown of this, these impacts could be, could be difficult. And what I would ask is that for all offices that are going to be impacted by AB 424, is that we see how this goes for a year, and if we need to, scale this, scale this back, because this may, we may be able to find efficiencies. Now, I understand that's not always the, the best way to go about it, but when we're talking about judiciary, I, I have a different feeling about approaching that and making sure that we're addressing that adequately. So those would be my issues with the current request on the general fund in regards to the new positions, but those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner. Vice Chair Hill, I've got you signed in next, and then I'll go.
I'm happy to hear from Lori as well, Mr. Chairman, if she wants to.
Yeah, and I was just going to clarify, because, you know, the detail is not in here, but of those seven positions, and again, I get, you know, we'll go back and we'll do what we need to do, but all the attorney positions that were requested are in that, that recommendation right now. So that's, if I remember off the top, I had three district DDA threes and one DDA four. And then there are, I believe it's the DSS and then support positions, so we can certainly work on what that, you know, what that compilation of staffing is, but those attorney positions were already in this.
And that, and that's, and I appreciate that, Ms. Cook, and I, and I appreciate that the, the main individuals are the DA's that need, absolutely need to be funded, but I want to go back to the discussion that I had in regards to that data entry in that timely manner. That's really where the system is going to break down if we don't have that adequately addressed. So those, that program specialists, the victims advocates, those type, those are the individuals that are really going to be able to process the information and get the, and collect that cohesively from all the departments so that the DA's have the ability to appear throughout the weekends and the hours in front of the judges to, to truly do those types of hearings. So it's more about having the support staff, not saying that the DA's aren't important, but having the support staff to, to adequately address that. Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, on the new CIP recommendations, those all followed the, the scorecard that was outlined to the board. I would just ask in the future, future budget, that we see the, the scorecard and kind of the backend of that, just so we have more information.
Okay.
For me, I, I know that these kind of CIP requests kind of come in chunks, so it looks like we have a lot of work to do at PAR Boulevard and to ensure the safety of folks who are there. I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, I can explain it to my constituency because it's nearly half of the new requests, or actually a little bit more than half of the new requests for CIP coming in. And I know that this board, last budget, we were really excited about what can we do to really transform our parks. And I know that there are a lot of park programs in here, and I'm excited by a lot of these programs. So thank you so much for your work on that. And I know that there are opportunities with other funds that we may be looking at for infrastructure funds or ARPA funds to see how we can leverage those things. And I know that there's been on the list for a long time, the North Valleys Library, and I think that that would be an incredible thing if we could have those support services to our community down the line. So I just wanted to address those priorities for the record, and, and I think the way that you went through this process with the staffing, I think that you did a really great job. I know there were so many requests, and I feel like being able to fulfill the 90, how many, 96 positions? 92 positions?
I agree.
Incredible job. And I like to see reclasses in the budget, so good job to the departments who asked for them in the budget. I think that that's the transparent way for. I think that that's the transparent way for all of the commissioners to see these requests, and then also for the community to understand these requests, because that's the ideal way that we should be, in my opinion, really processing these reclasses for, you know, folks looking forward, and how can they do the best planning for their department. So, the other thing, I have a question on the roads. I'm excited that there's additional funding for our road CIP. Was that in direct response to all the requests that the board has had and citizens have had on road maintenance concerns?
So what that is, is those are various capital projects, so those things that are over $100,000. And it could be a particular, and I can look to my friend back there, Assistant County Manager Solero. So, when we do the budget and we submit it, we have to reconcile back to all those capital expenditures. And so it could be ongoing, where we've got this plan in this particular area to resurface, repave, and that's a capital project of itself, and then the next year, it's a different area. So it's not just that they're, and so that is a distinction, and I didn't do a good job of explaining that, is that they're not all new projects within the other funds. The CIP fund, that first slide, were the new projects. And so within roads, it's how we have to categorize it and submit it to the state. But I'm not, when we come back on the 17th, which, you know, and we're working on that right now, is getting the detail of what those are. So is this, for example, is this, you know, this particular district, is it this road, is it, you know, is it this area of, you know, PCI improvement or rehab, or what it is? And so those aren't necessarily new, that's the total budget for those projects within the roads fund. So, we will have more detail related to that. We actually provided more detail to the board last year with the recommendation, but that's because we kind of got postponed, and so we did the recommendation about a week before we did the final budget, so.
I'm probably used to that.
You probably are more used to that, having more data, more specifics right now than.
Okay, this is just the time to give direction.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you, that's, that's very helpful. I just know when we had the roads department come and speak to the commission, there were a lot of, there was a lot of excitement about, is there potential to give some funding so that these infrastructure projects can be supported? And I know that the chairman and Commissioner Lucy have also worked with RTC to see how we can also get some funding for these public safety projects in the county, but I just, I don't want to get to a point of, you know, next year being like, well, we never allocated any money to these, you know, public safety improvements that are being requested, they're needed, but we don't have the funds.
Right.
So that's just something I'd like to, you know, keep in mind, you know, because we receive, commissioners receive a lot of requests.
Right.
For those things. But, and then 92 plus the positions that Commissioner Lucy asked for additional information on, on the DA's office. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that at the next meeting. But great job, I know that this was a tough one, but I'm very excited about the investments we're making in our community. I think that the community should see that we're being responsible stewards of our taxpayer money, but we're also investing in the places where we really need to invest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hill. I'm going to take a slightly different tact. So, I don't disagree with Commissioner Lucy with respect to the additional FTEs. I'm hopeful that, and the manager and I have had this conversation, I'm hopeful that we can figure out maybe a different way to fill those positions without creating FTEs. And I think that there might be some innovative ways that have been suggested that could achieve that. But maybe we need to take a different tact. Maybe this commission needs to put time and effort into the DA's office so that when we get FTE, or when we get unfunded mandates, we sue the state for the money. Why don't we ask the state, if they're going to spend time in the late night and, you know, force these things down on us, then why aren't, why isn't the state coming up with the money? And I mean, we can go, we can go line item by line item over the years that I've been here, Commissioner Jung, you've probably seen more than most of us of the unfunded mandates, because you've been here for so long. We should be questioning these things. And, and, and look, and I know that they're for the good of the community, but, but for Pete's sake, somebody has to pay for that stuff. And I think that they, they just send this stuff down without, without thinking about it. We have two line items, so we've got 22, 22 million, $71,347 for indigent services, and then 20 million, 837, 534, Lori, and this is on page 19 of the slides, which is almost $43 million. Are those one-time?
No.
No? Those are ongoing?
No, indigent is an ongoing, it's been ongoing for a while. It's a, there's a increase every year, there's some statute related to that back from before, when it was limited to indigent medical. Through legislative session, of course, it was expanded to indigent services, so we've been able to use it.
Oh, another unfunded mandate? No? No? You sure? Okay.
And then with homelessness, the idea is to get those operations and, you know, and then be able to, because again, we're, at this point, when it comes to operations and the campus, and, you know, there was a pretty good discussion last week related to the capital infrastructure, the capital side of it, but we also have that operating side and that support for those services. We have some temporarily ARPA-funded positions that we're going to need to figure out what that staffing complement is in the future to keep those online, so that we don't lose traction with those services. So, the short answer to that is no. Those are not one-time.
And, and, you know, I'm frustrated with this, because I want to see, and this is not anything to do with the budget, this is not you, I want to see progress on this stuff. We're spending a lot of money. And, and, you know, it's, these are taxpayer dollars, people who work really hard, and so I'm, I'm very concerned with this. For now, those are my comments. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to take a wholly different tact than that, and I believe that we, as a board, will always be recipients of unfunded mandates from the state, barring any change to the law. I have no problem suing. I think we should sue all the time, I'm a big believer in that. Well, I was taught that by our former ADA, Paul Leporelli, told me that in a civil society, the way we resolve our disputes is in, via the law. Now, meeting at the bike racks is also a way to solve our disputes, but not smiled at within the law. So, I take a whole different tact. I love when the state gives us stuff, please give it to the county. I wish the city would give us everything, because I think we do the best. And I think we have put together, for the last 15 years I've been here, it'll be 15 in August, we have absorbed so much from the state and actually turned around and showed them that we could do it so much better. The government, right here, closest to the people, and did it without any money from them as well. We had to do a lot of magic in our financing and our budgets, and a lot of it was duct tape, bailing out wire and bubble gum. But I never, that used to be something I'd fight all the time with the state, now I say, just give it to us, because I know I can do it better, and I know I have more than, my fingers on it. But I do get the reticence of, it does appear, the state legislature makes decisions that sound really great, pass them down to whoever is the hot potato to grab it, and then say, make of it what you will. So, I don't know if that will ever change. It might be, it's a different administration this time around, maybe there is a more of a, but I've been under the regime of both, and I've never seen a difference in how we're treated as a county. That's why I don't get really excited about state offices and that, doesn't matter. I get treated the same, no matter who's in control, and we are the catch-all. Again, because that's the reality, I like to just pick it up and move with it. But I'm happy to sue on the other end of it, too, and say, or at least say, we're thinking about this through, we have the President of NACO in the House right here, Nevada Association of Counties. There is a way for us to look with the cities, the National League of Cities, and maybe if we had enough pressure on the other side there, they would tap dance a bit about it. But to go, since we're getting into the weeds here, I do want to ask for a future agenda item, and I'd rather it sooner than later, but I do defer to what it will take staff to bring it here. And I want a full audit of our indigent healthcare, and how we pay it to the local hospitals, and how it's being used, and is it, is it highest and best use? Because we fund every one of these hospitals in northern Nevada, in Washoe County, if anybody gets in a hurt, gets hurt and doesn't have insurance, you all pay for it. I want a full audit of that, it's never been done since I've been here. And as a backside of that audit, what I want done as well is, I want the hospital associations to come here and tell us what the standard operation, operating procedure for available beds are, regardless if there is a pandemic occurring. Because what I understand is standard operating procedure through these hospitals that we fund, they don't keep a lot of beds available, because they want to make their investors of their board and the stockbrokers who are ahead of this board, future billionaires. And so, we were using, I'm really upset about this, and I feel like I was gobsmacked in a lot of ways. We were using data from the hospital association, who's saying, the world is coming to the end, there's no beds available. Dude, you never had beds available pre-pandemic, because this is standard operating procedure. So we were sort of misled of watching a certain data point that is a data point, that is what they standardly operate on. And I, in part of this audit, I want to talk about how many beds are available, and what we require as a county in paying this indigent care, which we have no choice to do, what we require them to operate at. We should have some say in that, certainly for the nonprofits, because they take our money just as happily as the for-profits. And nonprofits pay no sales tax, and they pay no property tax. So they, that's a boondoggle. I'm opening a nonprofit hospital, no, just kidding, when I'm done, I'm just kidding, but it's a boondoggle for them. And, right, and no income tax, but in terms of it, where it really affects us is right here locally, is them being subsidized, frankly, by all of us, who don't get to say, well, hey, by the way, these Jungs are nonprofits. We don't get to do that, we still have to pay our property taxes, et cetera. So, I don't have a problem with them giving, now, and here's the thing, I've been real quiet during this budget dispute or conversation, it's a hard dance for me, because how much do I want to say here? I'm out the door in January, so you guys have to manifest your own destiny, right? And I'm just here to support what the board chooses to do, but I do strongly believe, and if the chair doesn't want it on the agenda, you won't see me, there won't be a public attack, if it's, or if the manager, legal says, we can't have this on the board, or finance, or whatever, but I'm in a hard spot, because I don't want to say too much, but you know, it's hard for me to keep my mouth shut. So, it's the thing that's got me in trouble for my whole life, is popping up too much and popping out. So I'm trying to weave this, but please keep in mind the indigent fund balance, especially with some chaos that's going here locally with hospital administrators. Now's the time. And we can also maybe dictate a little bit, I don't know, but it'd be nice for the voters and the taxpayers here to see where their money goes at the hospital, because I, I mean, I don't think it'll be nice, but I think it'll be instructive and be a great explanation for some, the way things operate, Mr. Chairman. So thank you. And that's enough.
And you're, and you're absolutely right, and I think I agree with that. I just want to, I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing is sustainable. That's all. We've just got to be able to sustain it. And, and, and here's what I've found over the years, I'm just going to speak from a personal basis. The more money you put in my hands, the more I spend. You know? Lower taxes, the more, I mean, I, you know, I'll spend it, I'll spend it in my community, I'll buy stuff. So, I just, I want to make sure that the money that has been granted to us, that taxpayers are giving us to run our community and to make it a safe, secure, healthy community, is sustainable. It's just that simple. And Commissioner Jung, I think it's a great idea, because remember, that hospital was Washoe Med. That was our hospital, for years and years. So, I agree. Okay. What do you want from us, Ms. Valetich? Ms. Cook? What would you like? It says for possible action.
Right. So, to basically incorporate comments and/or information from the board, and direct us to come back on the 17th for the final budget.
Ms. Sanders?
Go ahead. Good, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Lucy, I take your comments around the DA's office, we'll direct staff, we'll go back and have some discussions, but I would point out that the approach that that particular department has taken to address these AB 424 issues has just been very different than the other departments. And I think Commissioner, Chair Hartung is on to something when he's saying, maybe there's some other ways to get the work done that don't require quite as many bodies. I do take seriously, and had, had the discussion with DA Hicks about the need for support staff to make sure that the needs get taken care of, we'll look at that. But I would point out to you, this board approved, I believe it was six positions back in December, that were funded by ARPA. We're sitting here, it's April, they filled one.
Yes.
So, that was, you need to understand that context in terms of why we arrived at the recommendation we did is, and I totally support the DA's office, I get it, it's important. And my comment to DA Hicks was, look, if you get to full staffing as budgeted, and there's still, it's not working for you, the workload's not being taken care of, then we'll have a conversation about how to fix it. So you should just have that as context, but we will go back and have the conversation so that he's confident that he's got what he needs to work with.
Okay. Commissioner Lucy?
Thank you, Chairman. And Mr. Brown, thank you for that edification. I do, like I said, I'm open to any opportunity that we can to address it, and as I said, whether it's start, start and scale back, or find different venues to facilitate the need, I just, to my, and I agree with you, and there's always ways to start small, and then augment after July 1 as well. And so we can go back and augment the budget, we have the funding availability, we've done it many times over, so it's not, it's not unheard of to go and say, look, and a department has an increasing, growing need, let's go back and augment, or find different solutions. So, I'm happy to sit back, I just, I just wanted to voice my concerns, because I know it, it was one of the bills coming out of the session that I was the most concerned about, and we've heard the most concern about across, across the state. And to your point, Mr. Brown, Manager Brown, is that they're having difficulties, even if we have the positions, filling the positions is a whole nother challenge, we just don't have the ability to fill the positions, because it just isn't the staffing available, readily available to do that. So, we're kind of between a rock and a hard spot, I just want to make sure that we're addressing it budgeting. And to the other point, too, to Commissioner Jung and Chair Hartung's point, the judges, they're paid for by the state, yet everything else gets to be paid for by us, everything. And so, a judge's salary, and they're already showing up, and some of them on the weekends already, they're already doing weekend arraignments and different things of that nature. So, realistically, the impact to the state is nominal when they pass legislation like this, versus what we really have to do with right here at this board. And I would also contend, if we're talking legislature and unfunded mandates, more often than not, individuals that end up at the legislature have never served in local government. Usually, they go from the legislature and work their way back to local government and become county commissioners or city council members. They always start, and so we have, we have an unorthodox type of government here in the state of Nevada, very different than other states, and to educate individuals about the needs, because a lot of people go down to Carson City with these grandiose ideas and wanting to change the world, write a bill, change a bill, and then all of a sudden, we are at the mercy of trying to make that work. Now, I understand we can, through different legislation, fix those things, but understandably, it is now our problem to deal with, and I want to make sure that we're adequately prepared to deal with those issues. And so, that's my, those are, you know, like I say, don't want to get into the weeds about the legislature, we're talking budget today, but a lot of what happens to our budget comes from Carson City, from people who have never participated in local government, very, very few have participated in local government, and understand the impacts that it takes to run a county or a city 365 days a year, and the challenges and the financial implications that it has on a community. So, if this isn't, if this isn't me asking on a tirade that we need help with the legislature, and we need to be more aggressive at the legislature, I'm planning on doing it next year, I'm going, I'm going, you know, as far, as hard as I can. So, that's my plan. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Lucy. And I think the great part about the dialogue we're having, just particularly about the DA's office and the staffing, is when it, if, if and when it comes back to us in, you know, five months for additional funding, the and when it comes back to us in, you know, five months for additional funding, the commission understands that. And I think that there sometimes can be a lack of dialogue of when, when we get these additional staff requests on, on our agendas, of understanding why. So, I think that, you know, understanding, you know, each department has these needs and understanding those more deeply, I think, is also something that we can all work on, I'm sure, to understand that perspective. Are there any other, oh, Commissioner Jung?
What I was going to say. Thank you very much. And, and, you know, ultimately, I want to caution the board and the manager. You know, these elected department heads, it's, it's an interesting dance. And it's, it's nothing new. I'm sure if you've spent five minutes here. But ultimately, you know, there is a tension with that. And the best that you can do is to make sure that you maintain your flexibility and your problem-solving. And this has never been a board that is afraid to open up a budget or backtrack if we've decided that we've overfunded or underfunded a different area. And to Commissioner Lucy's point of being involved at the legislature, I don't think there's been a time in eight years you haven't been involved down there. And it's, it's, for me, it's the luckiest thing ever because I don't find that interesting at all. So, I think it's great. Somebody will, will go down there and, and advocate for us and put his neck out on the line. And now, he's going to have to do it in two different capacities as president of the Nevada Association Counties. And then as our, I don't know, I don't even know if we've assigned liaisons yet, but as one of our liaisons to the legislature. And I want to promise everybody up here, too, when I'm out of office, I'll help you any way I can down in Carson. Because it gives, you know, I kind of have more credibility then because there's nothing in it for me, right? And I'm happy to go and smooth some edges or, you know, it depends on who's in power. And it doesn't matter whoever's in power. You're still going to need votes from everywhere. So, but I, I know that, I, I told the DA when I spoke to him yesterday, and I would say the same to the sheriff or the clerk or the recorder, you know, "You, you were elected to do this job and we'll do everything we can to make sure you can do this job." And we're only good if everybody's doing good. Every elected department head is doing great, reflects back on us. And when it comes to the DA or to the sheriff's office, these are areas that people are touched by, whether they want to or not. This is an area that is necessary for a functioning civil society with a high quality of life. And so, but I know you guys will figure it out. And we'll figure it out, too. You can go back and tell the DA where, I mean that when I said that to him yesterday. And I, one thing I'll say, too, about our manager is he, he approaches everything from a position of cooperation and trying to come to a place of yes, rather than immediately coming from a place of no. So, I, I'm not, I'm not as worried about it. And here, I'm on the record saying I'll work on that as well. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, you would like a motion just to?
Public comment?
Sorry? I know, I know. I'll, I'll get there.
I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that I know what the motion, what you'd, what you'd like the motion to look like.
Chairman, if I may, I'll take a stab at a motion for you. I'd like to accept the report, the, let me go back here. I'd like to accept the fiscal, county manager's fiscal recommended budget with the recommendations here brought by the commissioners to, to staff for some proposed changes prior to the May, the May meeting for the ratification of the final budget.
Okay. Good.
Second.
Okay. So, I've got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call public comment?
Of course. Let me get out of this one. First up, we have Tracy Hilton-Thomas.
Welcome.
One John 318 tells us, "Let us not love with words or speech, but actions and in truth. These are just some of the truths from the presentation that are causing concern for taxpayers. Is this seriously meeting your approval? This report does not include how much of the decreased unemployment rate is due to skilled labor leaving the area. There are shortages in many industries. The majority of those moving here are not here to work. How do you justify ramping up spending anything when the economy is expected to slow down and the county's revenue is also expected to slow? The report is telling you that county resources will not support all needs and budget requests for funding in full year '23. That is not sustainable. Homeless services impact city corridors who are not footing their fair share of this burden. It is not out in the valleys. Why are all county property owners being penalized for this bloated expanse when it only impacts a small percentage of the community or the state? Their actions are a huge contribution to the homeless situation. How do you have a request submitted to the BCC on a date that hasn't occurred yet? Why aren't you saying no to the $3 million not included in the full year '22 until Reno or the state pitches in? How many times are you going to allow the county to be ripped off by Reno? Why are you building new assets when you can't maintain what you have? Projects failing to operate within their budget should not get a free pass. Much like upgrades to a home, if you don't have the funds, you don't get the upgrade. The presentation certainly does not support any increased purchases contracted with Dominion, but rather the opposite. Any contracts with them should not be reviewed, renewed. Please do not approve the budget as written. Thank you."
Thank you.
Zach Young.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning again. Good afternoon, rather. Again, my name is Zach Young. I'm the Assistant District Attorney for the DA's Office, supervising our Criminal Division. I, I've been a prosecutor for about 17 years. One thing I've learned is to, to shift on the fly. Ultimately, my request today and some of my comments were going to be geared towards asking for ongoing discussions with your staff concerning our budget. I had some numbers and some stats and some ideas. As I'm listening to the commissioners' remarks, Commissioner Lucy, Commissioner Jung particularly, I appreciate your concerns expressed about the funding for our office specific to AB 424. So, with that, I'm going to curtail a lot of what I had to say. And I'm appreciative of some ongoing conversations with our, with our office. I will point out a couple of the comments that were made is that certainly, I recognize and appreciate the difficulties and challenges that have to come with balancing a nearly $1 billion budget. I get it. I don't appreciate it and understand it nearly to the extent that all of you do. But I can, I, I feel safe in imagining what that must be like. The DA's office's concern in looking only to AB 424 is the wholesale change from not only daily adversarial bail hearings, where we're required to communicate with victims, where we're supposed to receive reports and discovery, and release that to the defense, which has been our practice. Sometimes, on a matter of hours turnaround, we need not only the attorneys, but the support staff. And looking at the proposed budget, six of the nine support staff positions that we requested are not proposed for funding. Six of nine are not proposed for funding. I appreciate what was funded, but it is wholly insufficient for us to do our job in the name of victims' interests and victims' rights and public safety. In total, 35% of our budget is proposed for funding, which, again, has a direct impact on victims and public safety. I appreciate the opportunity that our office will continue to have. Again, I understand the difficulties with filling out a budget. But our sole goal as the prosecuting agency for all felony, gross misdemeanor and misdemeanor offenses from all levels of, of agencies, it is critical that we get the proper funding, the adequate funding. Our office has been very careful over the years to only ask for what we need, not for what we want. And we're, again, doing that here. So, I thank you for your time and ongoing consideration.
Thank you.
I have nobody else signed in.
Okay. All right. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Under discussion, you've heard me say it. It is not if the economy will turn down, it's when. There's just, I mean, there's just absolutely no question of that. And we've got to be very cognizant of these kinds of situations. So, I'm, I'm looking forward, Mr. Manager, to having some conversations with you to, to better understand how, moving forward, we plan on sustaining some of these things. And I'll, I'll be all ears. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Herman, I didn't, I have nothing, I, I'm sorry? Commissioner Lucy.
She's asking me to, to restate the motion. So, happy to restate, restate the motion. The motion is to accept the county manager's fiscal recommended budget with the direction given from the board today to bring back alternatives and some changes before accepting the final budget in May.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I don't know how the motion's carrying. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. All right. Please affirm your votes. That takes us, Mr. Manager, to item number 10.
Item 10 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
First up, we have Tracy Hilton-Thomas.
Welcome back.
Sorry. Can I, oh, overhead, please.
Here we go.
Thank you. John 1334 teaches us, "A new command I give you: Love one another. As I have loved you, so you must love one another." Ew, are you kidding? Unfortunately, Jesus was not kidding. God's first command is to love Him. The second is to love our neighbor. This command alone is where every human on this earth falls short of God's commands, which is considered a sin in God's eyes. Thomas Merton stated, "We are not at peace with the others because we are not at peace with ourselves. And we are not at peace with ourselves because we are not at peace with God." Nelson Mandela stated, "When we seek to demonize and dehumanize our opponents, we abandon the possibility of peacefully resolving our differences, and we seek to justify violence against them. I have come before you peacefully for over a year. Because of my love for God, not once have I called anyone names, requested the results of the 2020 election be changed, or given a comment of our voting kiosks being hacked. As stated in my email to you on March 9 last year, I have only presented information from a posture of improving Washoe County's election processes. It is, it is critical to note, connection to the internet is not the only method. Technology can be compromised. Your staff has suppressed this information at all costs. Compromise also occurs in the source code through operation, hardware, and software updates. Any person with a technology background will affirm, the only guarantee of smart technology from being hacked or compromised is when it's powered off. My main concern has always been for the abuse of costs and resources of our elections in Washoe County. The vulnerability of compromised technology and code you have no access, access to is just icing on the cake. I ask that you disregard all the noise seeking to demonize and dehumanize logic that has been presented to you. There are very viable and legal solutions to the abundant challenges within our elections. I ask you to please consider some of them. Thank you."
Thank you, ma'am.
Nicholas St. John.
Welcome back.
Nicholas St. John, for the record. One of the things you guys, we keep hearing you guys talk about are the, is a thing on Pyramid. And I believe that we only do what we believe, what we truly believe. And so, I would throw out to you guys that perhaps maybe you should put out a sign person out there with a go and a slow sign out there to keep people from having wrecks. Seems simple and wouldn't be, of course, to me, everything's not hard, but apparently, everything from the government's standpoint, it is. But anyway, that's one of my recommendations. I've heard you guys talk more about warning signs on this than ensuring that we actually have fair elections. And again, I demand that you remove the Dominion voting machines, as you've heard from one of my fellow patriots, that, and I'm a, I'm a programmer. So, I know that, that you cannot certify those machines and verify that they will not alter votes. You cannot do that because they will not give you the code. If they won't give you the code, then how can anybody sitting here say, "We are going to trust these machines"? You cannot do that. I've also given you a document that I'd like to see some discussion on and be glad to meet with anyone who would like to discuss that. As that, the anomaly there of Coal Springs is off the chart of 2,950 people who, who put in a provisional voting ballot in a little place like Coal Springs that only has 9,800 people who live in it. Next, I want to, I have actually approached to the manager's office, put in public records request about the metal detector and the violation of our Fourth Amendment and the Nevada Constitution's Article 1, Section 18, indicating that we are secure in our persons, our papers, and our possessions. And yet, every time we come into these chambers, and only when we come into these chambers, are we subjected to a metal detector and having people go through our belongings without a warrant, without probable cause, and without any justification. So, I'm demanding that you remove the metal detector. It's been here since May 25. And I know others have suggested or demanded that as well. We'd like to see some action on that. And finally, I already have, already have the meeting on the provisional voting anomalies. So, I'm looking forward to speaking to someone about that and seeing what we can do to clean up our problems in our elections. And for Commissioner Hill and Jung, after the meeting, I would like to meet briefly with both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monica Miles.
Welcome, Ms. Miles.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Manager Brown, Chairman Hartung. My name is Monica Miles, for the record. I'm with Nevada Donor Network. I first want to thank all of you for your support during National Donate Life Month and your support of organ and tissue donation throughout the years. The donation portion of today's agenda passed so quickly, and I apologize that we weren't prepared to say thank you. But I wanted to go on the record and make sure that we say thank you for your generosity, Mr. Chairman. We are very appreciative of your support and the sharing of your personal story and your connection. I wanted to share quickly what that kind of donation will go toward. The Nevada Donor Network Foundation has been established to raise funds to bring additional transplant opportunities to the state of Nevada. So, most people don't realize, but our only transplant center in the state of Nevada is University Medical Center in Las Vegas. And they only transplant kidneys. So, what that means for our northern Nevadans is that they have to travel out of state to receive that kind of care. So, what we are looking to do ultimately is bring a kidney transplant center to Reno to serve the people that need this kind of care, to elevate health care in our area, to bring jobs. And so, we wanted to share our vision with all of you. And we wanted to thank the chairman for his support. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Please, Commissioners.
Huge.
Don't, don't tempt me, Commissioner Jung.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's everybody in chambers that wishes to speak. I do have an email submitted by Elise Weatherly to be placed on the record.
All right. We will close that item and take it to item number 11. Mr. Manager.
That's me, right. Item 11 is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you have any such items?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, hold on just a second. I'm going to start because of what was mentioned. And unless you've gone through this, you don't realize how trying it is to take a family member out of town. We were transplanted at Loma Linda, and we had to move down there for three months. And it was, it was a very trying situation. So, I'm, I'm very appreciative of, of the effort. I just thought, okay, well, you know, it can happen in any hospital. It's not like the TV hospitals where they, where the hospital does everything, you know, you see these, you see these programs on TV and their, and their hospitals do everything. That is a pile of malarkey. And so, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank everyone from Donate Life, all of the branches, all of the arms, for all the hard work that they do to help those families to procure places to live while they're being transplanted, to just, I mean, just to figure out the whole process, because it's daunting. You cannot begin to imagine how daunting it is. And when this happened to my family, my wife, as, as we have done in the past, we divided and conquered, so we were doing different things. Sandy was working on one thing while I was working on another. I can, again, cannot begin to express my debt of gratitude for the work that you guys do and the families that have, have donated. They're, they're such a huge piece of this. You, I, I can't say thank you enough, I just can't. So, again, before I cry, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Commissioner Lucy.
Chairman, I just want to point out, I think that what you and your family have done for this region in regards to standing up for the donor, donor network and, and really putting forth, sharing your story and how personal it is to you, and I, I think what you've done is tremendous, and I think you should be absolutely supported in, in every effort that you make to do that. So, great job in all the work that you've done for them and, and continued support for them. The, one other thing I do want to point out, and I didn't miss it this morning in my initial comments, is that Commissioner John was, was honored this week at the VFW. You know, Commissioner John was, is a honorary member of the VFW post 9211. Her mom, Juanita, and her father have been active members for years, and they continue to, and Kitty's always gone and continued to support them, and so she was met with a, a letter of recognition, recognition by them, by the VFW for all of her support for veterans of foreign wars, you know, and through her efforts, you know, and what they do, the veterans of foreign wars, they provide food and supplies for families across the community, and through Commissioner John's charitable donations of time and energy, 200 families will be, will benefit from her, from her, you know, outreach. So it was a huge deal, and, and then her father was named, he's now an honorary member, not, what was it? Not an honorary member, he's a lifelong member.
The Legacy Award.
Legacy Award.
They created one in his name.
Yeah.
And if I might say, Mr. Chairman, they weren't honoring just me, they were honoring Commissioner Lucy, because truly what happened is they went to the air races, wanted to have a vending booth, evidently, they paid in the past, but I went full bore, "Why are they paying"? Got ahold of Commissioner Lucy, who's deeply involved with the air races, and they got it for free last year to, to sell their poppies, which are just donations, right? So they were so excited that Commissioner Lucy...
I was merely...
Was there in the bunker, and I'm a lifetime member of the auxiliary, as my mom is, and my dad, and my husband are both VFW members, veterans of foreign wars, but really, it was to honor Commissioner Lucy, and they used me as the ringer to get my parent, 85-year-old parents down there at 6:30, so that they could honor them and surprise them. So it was actually a great honor for Commissioner Lucy, and he's being way too modest, because I would have never even went, because I, I didn't want the award. Lucy did it all. I just threw a fit around for my dad, the chaplain, and it was the chaplain's award...
It was.
That my dad, and then now he has a plaque there with his name, and he's the first on it, will be named after him in perpetuity.
Yes.
And it was beautiful, and it was nice to have my friend down there, too, and all of the, and they had a good turnout, too, and all of the people were so impressed to have Commissioner Lucy there and felt, and I, I, you know, these young men and older men and women, and, and these are really the true patriots of our community, right? These are the people, my dad's career Air Force, he retired from that bureaucracy, and these are the people that stand their guard for us so we can sleep well at night, and for them, it, I don't think people really realize, they're so attached, but yet not attached to the government, how much it means when you local electives go down to that bunker to these men and women is beyond. Would you agree, Commissioner Lucy?
Oh, absolutely.
They were so honored that Lucy was there. They don't care about me, because I'm there, my parents are there all the time, and they don't care about Scott either, but Commissioner Lucy was a big rah-rah, so if anybody else wants to go, I'm happy to arrange it for you to come talk to them.
Well, the veterans are, the veterans are a very important part of what we do here at the community, and, you know, with Commissioner John's, I mean, but it was more about, about Ted and Juanita that night, and, and so we were just there, support staff for Ted and Juanita, and we were just merely bridges, but wanted to point that out. It was, it was a very nice event, and it was an honor to be there with the VFW, so.
No, and I, I just want to make one final comment. This just goes to show you how many things are actually happening in the community that commissioners have involvement in, that you have no idea that are going on. So I want to thank all of you commissioners for all the hard work that you do out in the community that, that people have no idea about, and, and the, and the truth of the matter is, and, and I, it's important to acknowledge it, but the truth of the matter is, is that, is that we're not looking for acknowledgement, because we know that, that this is what we were hired to do.
Right. Well, Chairman, with my comment, the posted, the posted, the post commander would like to come and present to the commission if, at your, at your convenience, and when you have the availability to put them on the agenda, they would like to come and, and speak to the commission if that's, if that's okay with you.
We'd love that. No, we'd love that, and we'd love to hear from them. So, anyone else? Anyone else sign in? By the way, I'm gonna do a little bragging just real quickly, with the help, and, and again, of Donate Life, that, that our daughter was brought back, literally, from the brink. She went on and went to medical school.
At Stanford?
Stanford, yeah. So we're really proud of her, you know?
It does.
Yep, it does, it does. I mean, we could not have done it without the help of Donate Life, and, and I'm serious about that. We could not have done it without that. It was just amazing. All right, anyone else? Thank you so much, everyone. We, we are adjourned.